Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar together with my co-host, Mark Rona-Jah of Statewide News Service, JavisTechPhilly.com. And as you can see here, calmness for the Jewish press.
Right Rabbi, and I'm having a lot of fun with all three assignments. And in the column, I write about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. But our guest today is someone who does relate to the Jewish community and every other community in the city. Kelly Kimbrough, Albany Common Council member, welcome to The Jewish View.
Thank you Rabbi, Mark, for having me.
You represent the 4th Ward, Ward.
What are the boundaries here? So, Mark knows that, well, he's a reporter, but 4th Ward is elsewhere.
The lines are changing so much.
But you have North Albany in your district. It's amazing. You go right up to the Menand's Line, which I always think of the county legislator, Virginia Mafia Tobler, always had that area. And you started Allen Street?
No, 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 no. River in the east, Livingston Avenue to the south. I go up Livingston Avenue to Northern Boulevard, across northern to Green Tech High School, and then out to Everett Road.
Everett, I thought it was that, okay.
It's near Everett Road, and then I come across I-90 down into Corporate Woods, back into the city.
You have the rail yard that's over there and all that, and then you come down into North, Tony, North Albany.
Right, so it's essentially Livingston Avenue to the Menand's Line.
Yeah, but you have...
For the most part, below Northern.
I mean, Grayledge Drive and that neighborhood there, you know, you could really do some good fundraising in that area there. And you have a judge, is one of your constituents, Rachel Kretser?
She's retiring, yes, yes. It's good, my area is unique. I have some of the poorest people in the city, I represent, and also some of the wealthiest. It's a good mix.
You know, that's interesting, because, you know, if you have, you're representing one group, you know, you're focused on one issue, but, you know, when you have a different kind of people, socioeconomic differences, you know, you gotta think of everybody, of course, you're representing everybody, and ultimately, everybody in the city also, but, you know, Albany really is diverse.
Yes.
There's poor, there's rich, there's, you know, all kinds of different people.
And you were elected, you started serving January of 2014?
That's correct.
So you're relatively new compared to like a Dan Herring or Joe Igoe, I mean, you're relatively new. Which committees are you sitting on?
Planning, human, what's it called?
Human Resources and Human Rights?
And Human Rights, and Public Safety, there's three. Planning and Economic Development.
Planning, Economic Development, and Land Use is one committee.
Right.
Human Resources and Human Rights is one, and then Public Safety Committee, which fits in perfectly with your background, because you're a retired police officer.
That's correct.
What rank did you finish, did you serve?
Police officer.
Police officer, you didn't move up to Sergeant, Lieutenant, or whatever, no. You were beat cop?
At a point in time, I worked patrol, I worked as a beat officer, which now it's called NEU, the Neighborhood Engagement Unit, we were called Beat Officers back in the day. And I also served at the end of my time in community services, which is community relations. We kind of ran the neighborhood associations and connected with those people, it's kind of community relations.
I guess, given the problems between community and police in certain other cities, I mean, saying "beat officers" would never, they needed to change that to be politically correct, I guess, because, you know, with all these issues going on between citizens and the police, you don't want to have the word "beat" anywhere.
Right, yeah.
You know, just as a police officer, going with your former life, then, it's just, I mean, like Mark's saying, it really is dangerous business being a police officer. I mean, when you're in the car, you know, do you feel scared, or it's just, I don't know, it's another job, I don't know what it would feel like?
Yeah, yeah, always, it's always, that fear is always in the back of your mind, I mean, it's what keeps you safe. I mean, you have to be reasonable, the world's changed a whole lot, and you have to police accordingly. So, yeah, there were times when I was nervous, but in general, I think if you're good to people and you connect with them, you're relatively safe out there as a police officer.
What was your most harrowing experience in the 22 years that you were on the force?
Harrowing? Harrowing? So, I would say it was an incident on Timbrook Street where a young man took a shot at a couple of officers, and I was in that group of officers in the area, he didn't shoot at me, but, you know, I was there, and we ended up chasing him behind the brownstones on Timbrook, and he, if you will, let go of, or fired a few rounds from the fire escape down in the area of the other officers, I was behind cover. So that was probably as close as I was to really that type of action.
Right, right. I'm sure when you went home and you told your wife, she was none too happy, and probably hugged you quite a bit, okay.
Yeah.
I understand that your children are very happy that you're retired, that they don't have to worry about their father, whether their father's coming home or not, that being an Albany Common Council member is a lot safer sometimes than being a police officer.
Is that your only job now? Because really officially, the Common Council is a part-time job.
Yeah, it is, and I have two family members, well, one now, that are battling stage four cancer, so I've been kind of taking care of them for the last two years, along with my council work, and so I really haven't been able to take on.
Sometimes people, they come on our show, of course, Mark brings in just about every elected official in the capital district, and some, you know, a lot of jobs are part-time, even the Assembly is officially a part-time, it's part-time, nothing, I do it, it's full-time for me, I'm putting in 40 hours a week, you know.
Or more. Tell me that in the middle of the night when someone calls me and says, you know, so-and-so got arrested. I think people still connect me with the police department, I mean, that's my past life, so I quite often have to remind people I'm no longer a police officer, I have to call the police department to have that issue taken care of, but it's, it is a full-time, a full-time job, don't let anyone tell you, I mean, you're on.
You get paid part-time.
You get paid part-time, you're at the supermarket with your family, you know, and some, one of your constituents, what, do you cut them off? No, you engage them, and whatever the issue is, you try to quickly take care of it. My family through my police life till now are quite used to daddy getting sidetracked by, you know, they say wherever I go, you know everyone, they're always stopping and talking to people, but it's a part of, you know, my life, you know.
And you probably carry a pad and pen with you so that you could write down their concerns and, you know, follow up with them later.
I just scribble it onto my phone.
On your phone? There's iPads, Mark, you're a little behind the time.
Samsung note, Galaxy note, you can run it on the phone.
How old are you?
How old am I? Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Yes.
Wow, so you've done a lot in a short period of time, relatively speaking. Did you always want to be a police officer? Were you always, were you growing up playing cops and robbers, or?
Well, I don't know about cops and robbers, but I'm from Chicago, I was born in Chicago, and actually, my grandmother, who recently passed, brought each of me and my five siblings to New York State to avoid the gang issue in Chicago. So, I mean, the gang violence in Chicago now is very, it's incredible, so.
People get killed every day.
That's what my grandparents took me away from, that.
What about in Albany, though, the violence? I mean, are we, you know, safe from, well, like you say, Chicago is known, I mean, it's always headlines.
He's from Chicago.
I'm from Chicago, by the north side, West Rogers Park, I didn't escape because of that, but in any case, but, you know, I mean, Albany's fairly calm compared to maybe big cities, would you say?
Compared to big cities, yeah, yeah, but we have our share of issues, but the police department has done a great job in recent years, you know, with that issue, keeping crimes down.
You were around, I believe, possibly, when the Guardian Angels started up in Albany?
Yeah.
Was that a hindrance? Was that a positive? Because now we don't see them, is there?
Well, certainly, I wouldn't say it was a hindrance, the Guardian Angels that were up here, and that was, they started around the time I first came, I came to the police department, so I didn't, I didn't see them as a, certainly as a hindrance, they were part of the community, they engaged the community, and a lot of the things that you saw in New York with how involved the Guardian Angels were down there, and getting mixed up and stuff, the ones up here weren't that deeply involved in causing a ruckus, and in, you know, in the middle of fights, and taking down, you know, criminals like down there.
Because Curtis Leeber was living here for a while.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, he was seen on the streets, he was up here, he made a home for himself here, and now you don't see any of them, they...
No. Came to police department, took care of all the problems.
Now, when you first started, I believe Chief John Dale was the, was your first chief?
That's correct, the first of seven.
First of seven?
I believe seven, yeah.
And he was the first and maybe only African-American, black chief?
That's correct.
Okay. How did that make you feel? Was that, was that a, you know, something that you said, you know, you can relate to, and made you feel more at home, or whatever? I mean, what's your?
Proud, I mean, he was accomplished, intelligent man, he'd been around for quite, quite some time, had a pretty good impact on the police department, and me as a young officer, I mean, he looked like me, you know, it was, yeah, it was empowering, it was something that made you proud, made you feel proud to put on the uniform.
Did he give you hope that you could someday be chief also?
Yes, and that was, that was gonna be my next thing, because, you know, those that come before you, you know, I was looking at him and saying, you know, there are possibilities, and he was the top guy.
And then you lived through some tough times with Tuffy and some others being chief, and that probably made you feel...
What a tough times, you know the history, again, he's the reporter, I'm the rabbi, so.
Just different types of policing, different types of policing, policing styles, different leadership styles.
Well, it was also personal, he got into some issues with, personally, and he was asked to leave the force, he was a good friend of the mayor, Jerry Jennings, and, but he was asked to step down as chief because he had some personal failings, I guess.
Well, right. The thing is, oddly enough, my, any of my experiences with him were decent experiences, and, you know, I never, prior to that, that incident, I, you know, I hadn't heard.
Who was before him?
I believe it was, it's on the tip of my tongue, he's, geez, there are so many, he's at Homeland Security right now, Turley, I'm gonna say Jimmy Turley was before him.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, because the names were so similar, Turley and Tuffy, that I just...
Right, yeah, yeah.
But you know that one of the committees you're on is public safety, so now in a way you're in charge, I mean, in a certain sense, you're not the chief, but in a certain sense you're in charge of public safety, and you have the bigger opinion about it. What needs to be done now to keep Albany safe?
Well, the current administration...
What are issues like?
Current administration is doing a pretty good job, I think, in that they realize it's a partnership, the policing and keeping people safe, it's not just about the police coming in and, you know, cracking heads, for lack of a better word, it's a relationship where the police takes care of the community, the community takes care of the police, and we really need to be working together to solve the city's problems around the issues of crime, at least, in my opinion.
Now, you know, I always laugh when I go to my neighborhood associations in the upper wards, and the biggest issue that they have is that when Niagara Mohawk or New York, or the telephone company puts up a poll, they don't take their second poll down, and they have two polls there, I'm like, you've gotta be kidding me, this is what you...
It's all relative, so.
This is what you take up people's time about, you know, that they forgot, they didn't take a poll, several polls down, I mean...
Everybody's got their concern.
I grew up in Brooklyn, you know, it's like, they escort you out of the meeting if they bring this up and take up someone's time.
The same thing, you talk about crime, you know, my kids live in Brooklyn, a lot of them, and, I have 13 kids, and they come up here and hear the news, you know, the regular radio news, oh, someone crossed the street the wrong way, I'm like, you're kidding me?
They're serious, right, you're wasting my time.
You're kidding, you know, with Brooklyn, you know, in New York, the crime, this guy's murdered, and this guy, who knows what, and, you know, and it's so, just listen, it's, everybody's got their issues, you know, it's difficult for some person as in nothing for the other person.
Well, that's true, I mean, you know, when they moved the Hilton Barn, that made big news here, they moved the barn across, why did the barn cross the road, to get to the other side?
Right, yeah.
It's like, you know, how do your constituents relate to these types of things?
Well, it depends on which constituents you're talking about. There's more important things than, you know, moving the barn, or, I mean, we're talking about poverty, you know, unemployment, issues like that, that are really issues in parts of the areas that I represent, you know.
And is there a solution? Is there something that could be done? I mean...
You know, jobs, we need jobs, we need a, we need to get a big employer in here, I don't see manufacturing coming back to that level, but certainly, some of the talks about employment at the national level with repairing infrastructure and the like can create jobs for people here.
Well, maybe the convention center, they must be hiring, how many jobs, you would probably know, I mean, you know...
Thousands, thousands of jobs, yes.
Right, but...
But they're temporary.
Right, for one, they're temporary, and not a lot of our folks are on those, on those jobs.
Were you talking about construction, or just right, once it's going, you need...
Oh, once it's, right, we're not to the point where it's opening yet, and...
Once you open it, there has to be a few hundred jobs.
Right, yeah, yeah, at that point, but we're at the construction phase now, and, you know, we're, you're not, I'm not seeing a lot of folks from my area on those job sites.
Yeah, are they, you know, is MWBE helpful? I mean, that's the Women in Business, Minority Women Business Enterprises, is that helping anything?
To an extent, most of these companies aren't, and it's, and I don't want to talk out of class or school, but they're, they're meeting the requirements, but those requirements are not including any of our folks. In some cases, somebody, the companies from out in the area already meet those requirements, so they don't have to newly hire to meet those requirements, if they already have that going on, then they're, they're all set.
Is the 255 Orange Street, is that in your area?
No.
No, that's another district, okay.
Yeah, Council in Bailey.
How, when you sit at the council meetings, and you hear this sometimes petty bickering going on, does it bother you? I mean, I know that you're a good listener, what are you thinking when you hear of these factions going against each other?
I think it's, it's silly on the one hand, but the thing is, we're responsible for making decisions that impact lots of folks' lives, and I think we really need to try to get past all the petty political, I mean, I find myself in a political position, but I hate politics, I absolutely hate it, it's what messes up getting things done, you know, the city of Albany needs a lot of things, and people need to, we as a council need to get together and work on these issues, that's not, everyone has their individual issues that are individual things that they're working on, or that they care about, and that's understandable, I have some of my own also, but we're all supposed to be working for the greater good, and...
You don't wanna see that.
Not as much as I'd like to.
Now, there's apparently a faction that's anti-Shiin and a faction that's pro-Shiin, is that something that you would agree with?
Not, you, what you're doing is you're dividing that based on support for different pieces of legislation, or just, the thing is, for myself, I like to see myself as independent, although someone could look at my voting record and say, well, you supported everything the mayor said, but it's not because I'm in it to support her, it's because I believe in these things, it's because I believe it's what's best for my folks and the people that I represent, I don't, I mean, people put me in that for Mayor Shiin's faction, I think she has a lot of great ideas.
Oh, so you're the one?
Yeah, right, the one, the one, but the thing is...
Who thinks she has a lot of great ideas?
When we meet on some of the, on some of the legislation...
So, we have, and I'm gonna name names, not you, but Camiso, Crasher, Robinson, Bailey, and sometimes O'Brien are lining up on one side, and then people sort of line up on another side, the rest of them, you know, Conti and Igoe and Herring, and they line up on another side. Is that accurate? I mean, you may be independent.
It appears that, it appears that way, but you know what I'd like to see, when you have a counter argument, or you disagree with a point, or something that someone's putting forth, I think, an alternative plan, that's one thing that I don't really see a whole lot of, when we're having these discussions and folks get into arguments over stuff, if you're gonna say, this is wrong, or I don't agree with that, you should certainly offer, I think, an alternative to that.
And to that point, I look at the city budget, and I say, you know, you got someone talented like Frank Camiso, who's into accounting and into numbers, and a numbers geek and all this, you know, he worked for the state comptroller, he works for the county comptroller, I mean, he could certainly put together his own counter budget, along with his faction, if you want to call it that, but I don't see it, and I don't, and I would like to see more of a change and a shift from what the mayor proposes, rather than the common council just disposing of whatever she proposes.
And unfortunately, that's, most people don't realize, and I'm assuming you, you've been around this long enough, it's the way our government's set up, it's just, if you think about it, dating back to even the last administration, it's, it's...
Well, during the Corning years, which was 42 years, and during Whalen, there had never been a negative vote on the common council, it wasn't until after Whalen that Jennings came in that there was a negative vote, and everyone like ran scared, you know, ran with their tail between their legs, saying, what's gonna happen now? And there was nothing happened, so people started voting no more regularly.
People disagree, and the thing is, by all means, you shouldn't just say yes just to go along with the crowd, I mean, I'd like to think that every, the other 15 members that are sitting in those seats have opinions and ideas about different things, and if, I'd hope they're just not gonna vote yes or no based on just following the crowd.
Because as far as I know, the mayor doesn't have like a leaders meeting, like they do in the state, where she brings in the common council members to find out what's best for their district, you know, has she brought you in when she's developing the budget, or the budget director, and said, you know, what can we do for your district, you know, what do we need? I mean, I would think that if you were gonna be able to wholesale vote for the budget, that maybe there was something in there for Ward 4.
Right, no, I've had a, that was the, I've had a conversation or two along those lines about things in my area, but I, I believe that's being done with all council members, to my knowledge, yeah.
Well, let's hope so, I mean, because some of those conversations could be quite, quite contentious.
Right.
You know, but, you know, when you look at, so that was one of my pet peeves, you know, is that still, when we have more open government, that we don't have, you know, more open than the Corning years, and then, which is before your time maybe, but, you know, that we don't have more of transparency and more recalcitrance against what one person says at the top of the city, you know, top of the government. But, you know, do you hear that the mayor's gonna be challenged in a primary? Because there's really no Republican Party in the city of Albany.
Other than Frank Camiso Jr., other than hearing he...
Carolyn McLaughlin?
Yeah, I've talked, no, absolutely, there's been little whispers, people talk.
Of course, that's the fun part, not politics.
I haven't heard that directly from him, I haven't heard that directly from her, but you hear enough of this stuff, so.
So let me, so what would you like to propose to see done differently if you had a magic wand and you didn't have an $18 billion budget gap? What would you...
Magic wand aside, I think our, one of our biggest issues is obviously the tax base, and I'd like to see the state do more for us, I'm not, not saying, just, if you look at the situation, you look at what, the presence of the state between university, and just the capital and all the state agencies here, that right there would plug a budget, a budget hole, I think, that would, that would be very helpful, I think, for me, if I had my say, that would be a big, a big step, a big ask.
See now, Albany Medical Center has, you know, agreed to some pilot money, payment in lieu of taxes, but St. Peter's hasn't, and I'm just wondering, is there any way that maybe we could wrench some of that money out of St. Peter's?
Shame them into it? You know, I'm not a part of those discussions, but the thing is, I think we certainly should be asking, asking the question, and, because, I mean, that's, I mentioned the state, but not, not for profits, they're, they're a big part of our issue too, but they, a lot of them do a lot of good work and great, and great things, so you can't discount that, but as one of the few taxpayers in the city, which you're one, I need some relief, and that's what I get from my folks also.
Because I hear that if we raise taxes, it would be 10% to cover the 10% budget gap that we have, I mean, 10% of the budget is out of whack every year, it's $180 million deficit, $18 million, $184 million budget, $18 million gap, it's about 10% out of whack, and it doesn't seem like there's any movement on that, it just seems like it keeps getting even a little larger, I mean, I don't know, and just, do you, are you a numbers guy at all, or not really?
Not a numbers guy, but I can see, and things do have to change.
Okay, so are you living the dream that you ran for office and...
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, I love Albany, and in my last few years with the police department, I did the community service thing, so it's essentially kind of what I do as a council member, so I, you know, I was close to the community, did a lot of things, community oriented, between the neighborhood associations, tennis, so I was already serving the people, and I'm close to them, so I still am, to that end, I'm good, but is it what I expected? The politics are what spoil it for me, really, but I'm about working for people, and politics is...
You and me both. Well, you know, when we have just a one-party city, there's not much politics, as much as if there was two-party system here, but I gotta tell you something, full disclosure, I was the, for two years, going back 20 years, I was the executive director of the Albany County Republican Committee, and we were getting people to run for county legislature in some of where you live, you know, in some of the area, so we went around to get signatures from Republicans in Arbor Hill, there are Republicans.
There are, right.
They're enrolled Republicans, but they're only enrolled because they think, they thought that no one would ever run as a Republican in their district, and they never wanted to be bothered, and I learned this firsthand by going into some of those basement apartments and seeing them do the coke and the drugs and all this, and they're like, man, what are you doing? And here I am, not looking like any of you, the crowd, and they just, you know, and I said, we just need your signature on, and they would tell me, well, you know, we enrolled Republicans, we didn't want to be disturbed.
Right, yeah.
I said, well, just do it now, and you probably won't see us for 20 years, so just do it now, and we got the candidates on the ballot, we just didn't win, you know.
Lack of support.
But we, you know, I just think there needs to be a two-party system in every community, I mean, you just, you just don't run things, I mean, you know...
This is New York State.
Doesn't run well, you know.
Right, right, it's one side, I agree.
So, I just, anyway, I had to tell you that story, it didn't seem to shock you that they were doing drugs in the basement apartment?
No.
Now, Narcan, I mean, do, I mean, other drug fighting, I mean, how do you get rid of drugs? How do you weed out the drugs? No pun intended, but...
Well, it's about supply and demand, as long as the demand is there, I mean, we can't put a police officer on every corner, we can't.
But you say that everyone's, that people are impoverished, but they can afford the drugs, but they can't afford food for their kids?
Right, right, that I don't, it's making poor decisions, obviously, some folks, but in addictions, as the son of a person, addicted person, I can attest to, gets a hold of you and doesn't let go, so, again, now people have to make better decisions, I think it really boils down to personal responsibility, that's what it really boils down to, you talk about those kids, and, you know, feeding them and clothing them and taking care of them, it's really, as a parent, when you decide you want to have children, and you bring kids into the world, then, no?
Well, if you don't decide, then they come in anyway.
Right, it creates an issue, the issue that we're, we deal with every day, so.
It's just amazing, so... It's just amazing, so, you know, hopefully, do you have, do you have, um, I, I know you talked about the politics side, but do you have ambitions to wanna run for a higher office at all?
At this point, no, 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 I, I like serving
You're good where you are.
I'm good where I am.
And may not be for too much longer, is what I'm hearing.
No, I didn't say that, again, I like, I like, I like, uh
No, but that's what's keeping you.
Serving people, so this is, this is how I'm serving out.
Do you have, do you get primary? Do you have?
Oh, at this point, I, it's, it's not until next year, so
Right, but do you get, did you have a primary when you first?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, someone who was on drugs, or no?
No.
Okay.
No, you should have him on, it's, uh, Clifton Dixon, you know Clifton Dixon?
Oh, really? Oh, he ran, oh, okay, no, I didn't, he, he has trouble with his petitions sometimes, uh, also.
Mark knows all the politics.
I just wanted to, no, I just Yeah, I just had one more, uh
Running out of time, definitely.
But you, you do fundraisers, you have fundraisers, I saw that you had a couple of fundraisers.
I had two.
Yeah, you had two fundraisers, is that, does that bring in money, or is that just that you feel like you don't wanna?
No, no, it's helpful, but the thing is, running for public office, I mean, you, I'm not Donald Trump, and so are, there are a lot of people out there that can say they fund their own campaigns or whatever, the thing is, it's about the greater good, I'm out here trying to work for people, so
How much does it co, cost to, for a Common Council, if someone wanted to run for Common Council, what, what should they budget? 10,000?
I'd say 10,000, I think, yeah.
Okay.
All right, listen, you're doing great work, we're behind you, and, uh, we're gonna have to check in with you again, uh, to a report card every year, but
Okay.
You know, keep Albany going and find some, a few million dollars if you can, and help them out.
That would be, not, just a big bag of money.
In the meantime, keep going with good success and good health.
Much success to you.
Thank you.